Welcome everyone to the Township Council meeting, Monday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. This meeting is now called to order. Will you all please rise for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice, the adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January fourth, two thousand and twenty four. A copy of the notice was sent to the North Jersey Herald and News and Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
President.
Councilmember Murphy.
President.
Councilmember Hablet.
President.
Councilmember Vancheri.
President.
Council President Scobha.
Present. Have a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty third, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancheri, second by Councilwoman Hablets. This is to approve the minutes of September twenty three, two thousand and twenty four. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablet.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes, have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October seventh, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilwoman Vancheri. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Obstain.
Councilmember Hablet.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes, Mayor Damiano.
Thank you, Council President. This evening I have one proclamation to report on, and it is our National Friends of Libraries Week proclamation. And I'm going to ask anybody associated with our library or any friends of the library to join me in the front of the room here as I read this proclamation. I remember growing up here in Little Falls, spending quite a bit of time in our Little Falls Library, and I can tell you that over these past handful of years, it has only gotten exponentially better. And I'm also now proud that after one little hiccup, we have matching concrete on the outside of our library that is now uniform as you enter. So that has been repaired as well, which we're all very happy with. And this evening, for proclamation for our National Friends of Libraries Week proclamation, it reads whereas. All right, we'll pick up where we left off. And the proclamation reads, whereas libraries are essential to the educational, social, and cultural fabric of our communities, providing free access to knowledge, information, and resources that empower people of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas the Friends of the Library groups across the nation, including our own Friends of the Little Falls Library, play an indispensable role in supporting, enhancing, and advocating for the mission and services of all local libraries. And whereas the Friends of the Library are instrumental in fundraising efforts that provide much-needed financial resources, enabling libraries to expand their programming, services, and collections beyond the limitations of public funding. And whereas the contributions of the Friends of the Library not only provide material benefits, but also foster a culture of volunteerism, engagement, and community spirit that strengthens the library's role as a welcoming space for all. And whereas National Friends of Libraries Week offers an opportunity for the Township of Little Falls community to recognize the important work of the Friends of the Library and to encourage others to join them in supporting our library's mission. And whereas the continued success of the Little Falls Public Library is directly tied to the commitment and passion of the Friends of the Library, whose efforts make a lasting difference in the lives of our residents. Now therefore be it resolved that I Mayor James Belford Damiano, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October twentieth through twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four, as National Friends of Libraries Week in the Township of Little Falls, and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the contributions of the Friends of the Library and to actively support our local libraries in any way they can. Thank you all for everything that you do with our library. Unfortunately, we didn't have a frame ready for today, so we're going to keep this. We're going to frame it, and we're going to have it delivered to the library. It's going to be hung somewhere there on the wall. All right. So thank you all for coming. We appreciate it.
For those that you were watching in the chat, unfortunately, we had a false alarm, fire alarm, so we had to pause the meeting for a bit. That was the reason why you probably couldn't hear anything coming through the voice stream. We'll continue with council remarks. Councilwoman Patel.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few upcoming events for the Public Health Committee. The Flu Vaccination Clinic is still being held Wednesday, October twenty third, from nine to eleven is the next time. It's going to be at Clifton City Hall. They're also doing one on Wednesday, October thirtieth, from two thirty P M to four thirty P M. Then on October twenty fourth, they're doing a program here in Little Falls at the Civic Center. It's going to be at ten thirty, and it's essentially about learning all the different elements of wellness and what makes a person healthier, you know, including their environment, spirituality, financial responsibilities, et cetera. And again, that's going to be at the Civic Center on the twenty fourth. And then finally, the Clifton Health Department partnered with John Thuro Cancer Center, and they're doing a free paint and sip on Monday, October twentieth, at the Boys and Girls Club in Clifton, and that's from six to eight thirty P M. And that's essentially just a program to raise breast cancer awareness, and it should be a great time. So anyone wanting to go can sign up for that. And that is all, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Patel. Councilwoman Murphy.
Thank you, Council President. I'd first like to thank the mayor and my fellow council members and the members of the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee that came out on October first for Domestic Violence Awareness Month flag raising. I'd also like to thank Councilman Vancheri for helping light up town hall purple for the week. We had a nice turnout that night. It was a beautiful night, and I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I'd also like to thank a couple of the members individually who helped with the ribbons that you see on Main Street and Long Hill Road and some of the other areas of town. Those ribbons were hand-cut and prepped, and so I'd just like to thank Mary Ann Holzak, Cindy Shenani, and Dana Picoli, who all helped put those ribbons up and spent a couple, quite a couple of hours getting those through town. So just want to thank them. It's a big effort for them and a very nice touch to drive through town and just spread awareness that way. So that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Murphy. Councilman Vancheri.
Thanks, Council President. I also too want to thank everybody for attending the Italian-American Flag Raising earlier this month. A big thanks to the Seig Valley Unico for always being there and bringing desserts, and more importantly, bringing coffee before start of one of these meetings. So it's always welcomed by me. So thank you for that. I did want to also say thank, great job by the Little Falls Fire Department. I know they had some calls over the weekend, and they're best in the business, so appreciate all the work they did to make sure all our residents are safe. Couple other things that we're working on with Mr. Controne is we are in the process of ordering three of the digital speed signs. We're looking to add some more to town. If you've seen the ones that are on Patterson Ave and some other main roads where it'll say your speed is this, and if you're going over, you get a nice little slowdown reminder when you're under the speed, it says thank you. So we're looking to get three more of those. We're also working on getting some lighted pedestrian crosswalks, looking to get three as well. Two would go over by Patterson Ave by the rec center, and then another would go by Wilmore Road by the park. And then I did have a chance to ask our engineer, because I think everybody knows how frustrated and annoyed I am with the traffic light that is still not here almost two years later. Apparently, they are waiting on some additional brackets that need to come in for the traffic light to be completely ready to go. So as soon as those brackets come in, hopefully we're going to date in terms of when this light can finally be installed. Because believe me, every time there's an accident, my phone goes off as a reminder, where's the traffic light? And we are working on it. So hopefully engineers will have some more updates for us in the future. Council President, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Vancheri. Councilwoman Hablets.
Thank you, Council President. So first, I'd like to thank all of you for the proclamation for the National Friends of Libraries Week. Our Friends Group is really hoping to do a lot this year, including assisting with raising monies for flexible seating for the children's area. The library is very grateful for them. As the library liaison, we're very happy to have them. This Sunday that just passed was a great Sunday here in Little Falls. We had our Little Falls spooky Sprint five K, and it was a great day. There were amazing costumes, great participation, and it was a beautiful fall day. Thank you to everyone who made this day happen. The Recreation Department, our Police Department, our D P W, our E M S, our Cert Department, our volunteers, Tony Seber, and our sponsors for an amazing day. Can't wait for next year. This Sunday coming is our last farmer's market of the season. It will be our annual trick-or-treating with the vendors and a costume contest at twelve P M. So make sure you stop up before the winter with all of your favorite vendors. Our Recreation Department will be hosting our annual Trucks and Treats event at Wilmore Park on Halloween starting at six P M. So while you're enjoying trick-or-treating, stop by, get something to eat. Also, if anyone wants to bring their candy to the park, I know a lot of people say everyone, you know, trick-or-treats in the middle of town now. Don't get many trick-or-treaters. You are welcome to bring your candy, set up a chair, and hand out your candy there. And then lastly, the township is preparing for its two thousand and twenty five recreation grant season, and we will be sending out a survey to assist us with our grants for next year. It will be Little Falls Township Parks and Recreation Improvement Survey. It will be sent out via Community Pass, and it will also be on our township website for people to, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hablets. This on October fifteenth, we held our Harvest Moon Dance. It was well received. The seniors had great fun and laughter. Actually, they wanted me to continue the program. I blamed it on the mayor that due to budget cuts, we couldn't extend the program. So we had to cut it off at nine thirty, but they really had a wonderful time. They really did. It was great food, and we were just complimented all throughout the night. Thanks to Officer Vanek, Councilman Vancheri, Councilwoman Hablets, and the mayor helping to serve the food. It's always good, Chief, that one of your own shows up in front of the seniors to make sure that they feel real safe. I also apologize. Unfortunately, that night was the same night as Jan Kapoor as an oversight on my behalf. We'll make sure that doesn't happen in the future. As it was alluded to, Councilman Vancheri talking about the fire department. Yes, unfortunately, there was a severe fire on a street I live on late at night, and the first to arrive was the officers of our great department under the pretense that it was not a fire call. So they always go into a challenging situation. Upon them arriving, and finding out what was really going on, the fire trucks came instantaneously practically. Almost every fire department except one, I think, showed up at that fire. It was quite a difficult situation with a lot of smoke. And as you saw tonight, I think the council saw it and some of the residents saw how volunteers respond instantly, you know, on on their time to come and check out a situation. And this was a difficult situation due to the smoke, and I was able to witness firsthand what fire personnel have to go through in that type of situation. So many thanks to their great work. Chief, anything for us this evening?
Just a reminder that the next week, obviously, or coming up, we have Halloween, so we're going to have increased presence in the center of town. We're working to get the light towers, motorcycle patrols, some crossing guards maybe at the park down at the system residence to and from. We do have the last, last day of our senior police academies this week, so we're going to graduate. That six-week program was well received. We're contemplating potentially another offering rather than wait a full year to do it again just by how, you know, well-received it was from the residents. Good news. We just installed phase two of the M P S safety sticks, so I'm sure some of the council saw more of the sticks in the downtown area. We put another one on Patterson Ave, so that was seven additional parking sticks. They're still going through their test and evaluation before they go live, so we should see increased enforcement for some of the parking. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief Counsel. Anything for us this evening? Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Vancheri. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comments shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. Meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The floor is now open for anyone that wishes to speak on agenda items. Melissa, Mr. DePiero, and anyone in the chat. Seeing no one come before us in the council chambers, have a motion to close the public. Moved by Councilman Vancheri. Is this for agenda items or? Okay, thank you, ma'am. We'll be right. It won't take just a few seconds. I'm sorry, who made the motion to close the public? Councilman Vancheri, second. Councilwoman Patel, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to adopt, to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Councilwoman Hablets.
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy. This is a roll call to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablet.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes, have a motion to open the meeting to the public for general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancheri, second by Councilman Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, Madam Clerk.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comments shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Hi, thanks for listening. I'm Debbie Lorenz. I live at one eighty-five Lower Notch Road.
Good evening.
Sixty-one years of my life. I've lived in Little Falls from Lower Notch to Overlook to Cedar Grove back to Lower Notch again. My husband and I love this town. We graze our sun. Currently on Lower Notch Road, there is a lack of speed signs. There's one at the base of Lower Notch. If you're coming off of Long Hill and you're making a left, there is one in front of the first house at the bottom of the hill. So when you're making that turn, you really can't see it. Coming down the hill, there are none, zero. We understand in the neighborhood that Lower Notch Road is a main artery. Since the construction Notch Road has just become a service road, which is fine. I take it home myself. However, Lower Notch Road is the main artery now, the first coming west. It's been flawless Notch Road instead of Lower Notch Road. There's twenty-four hour speeding, racing. There's burned rubber marks, tire marks on the road in front of my house, my neighbor's homes. It's disruptive. It's twenty-four seven. It doesn't matter. The police have responded appropriately. However, there is no guidance if you're coming off the highway, whether you're coming from the westbound side to the eastbound side down those ramps. I've seen it myself. I took a service road home tonight onto Lower Notch from Lackawanna. Person came flying down the hill. Never made the stop sign, never stopped, came rushing down and intended to just keep going. I need to drive. Most of the people in the neighborhood are brave. They don't have any problems. Take care of our property. We love it here, but we don't feel safe. There's also an issue. Is it a truck route? Because Brower Town Road originally was the truck route for many years. Now all of a sudden, and I'm not saying vans, box trucks, it's tractor trailers, and it's tractor trailers in the middle of the night. And it's noise, and is it necessary? I don't know. Has that route changed? That's our question. My neighbor's retaining wall was destroyed last year. He had now has a five-month-old and three-year-old. Lovely people, never complain. And out-of-control high school driver going to P V, down Lower Notch Road, lost control of his car, crashed into the retaining wall and destroyed not only his car, but the wall. My poor neighbor, new to the neighborhood, had to deal with this. So that's just one of many accidents which I'm sure the police department can attest to. And we're concerned. You know, like I said, we need speed monitoring, deterrence, and hopefully ticketing. Because when you hit someone's pocket, they'll learn a good lesson. And I'm not saying let's make it like a town where everybody gets speeding ticket. You have to have some kind of a leeway. I work in Jersey City every day. It is a nightmare, but that's the city. This is Little Falls. This is a nice peaceful town, so we'd like to see it remain that way. And I understand not everybody coming off the highway, going down Lower Notch is a problem. But the majority, yes. I even have people who walk their dogs and or ride their bikes that have to cut into my driveway. And it's a pretty decent-sized driveway. Get out of the way of cars coming because there's no leeway for them, and it's a safety issue. So I'm hoping, you know, we all love our town, support it. I'm hoping that something can be done and studied or watchful eyes check out signage. You just mentioned those blinking signs. I was hoping you were going to say that because I see them, like you said, Patterson Ave, Wilmore Road, and it makes you think. I mean, coming along the highway, it makes you think, especially if you're in a school too. Whether school is open or not, I hesitate, so I, you know, try to make sure, and it's a good reminder to people. So I please to the council and to the mayor and police chief, consider this, any options that you have, whether it be speed bumps, which may be a problem too, I don't know, but any signs would help us. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for coming before us this evening and bringing this issue before the governing body. I'm sure that locating areas where we could put up additional signage is probably a pretty easy fix to do. And also, I'm sure the mayor will be talking to the chief to see if you can increase the police presence there, and as well as possibly getting a blinking sign as we have on Wilmore Road to show. That's quite a good one because it actually starts to blink, and that sign is very nice. It starts to blink, and all the lights go off as you start to go over twenty-five. And it really alerts you in a great fashion. The tractor trailer issue, I am not sure if that road, we could stop trucks from coming down. I don't know, Chief, if you know the answer to that, if that's a road. If that's a road that, uh, because we can't arbitrarily just stop tractor trailers. It's against interstate governing laws of how trucks have to get to destinations. Uh, we could take a look at that through legal and see if that's a possibility. Uh, but I, I don't think we can answer that question this evening until we look into it. Uh, there's been towns that have done that and I've gotten into trouble by arbitrarily just saying no trucks uh, to come down. Um, so there are laws to protect truckers to get to their destinations, but we will take a hard look at that. Does the governing body here have anything that they like to comment? Or have any questions? Mayor, uh, Councilman Vincieri, uh, Councilman Vincieri.
I was just gonna say, because um, I'm sure after this meeting, if you want to connect with the chief, because we do have the complaint portal, but maybe take the information because typically what will happen too is the police department will gather the information, then look to spend some time with you to get some details in terms of when this is occurring. I know you said twenty-four seven. But then what they'll do is a study, have the box placed on the street and usually around two weeks. And then they'll get some good solid data that will tell them when it's a problem because they've done this throughout the town, which is great about the traffic division is they'll identify it and then they'll sit there on those particular times that come up in the study and they're pulling people over because it, it does happen. So you can definitely do that. Um, with the digital signs, we're looking at order three, you know, I had one marked for Wilmore, another for Brower Town. I think the third one could go on Lower Notch, but uh, mayor could also ask D P W two to look into adding some uh, speed signs. Uh, the twenty-five mile per hour ones on the road already, we can do that easily because there's poles in place where they can just add them. Whether it's the ones that say no parking this side or whatever. So we can definitely do that. But when it comes to speed humps, I mean, that's down the road, obviously with the data. And what we've typically done, because I've had the chance to do it on three streets in town, is gather that data. And then if it does warrant it based on the police department's assessment, we'll set up a meeting with the residents of that particular street and have a conversation because we'll bring in the engineers as well, the police department. And they'll go through how it works because what's usually happens, and mayor and I just went through this uh, last year, everybody wants them until it's time to put them in front of your house. And then it starts the mad dash of trying to figure out where he can place the speed humps in order to hit certain restrictions that are applied because they have to be a certain amount of feet from each other. So that's always something to keep in mind. And if it does come to that point, what I would do is connect with some of your neighbors because that's what the neighbors did on Houston. They all kind of knocked on the door and talked to each other. Same thing with Van Hell and Jacobus where people had, hey, I want it or I want it. Because the biggest issue is you're on the right side, your neighbor's on the left, you may want it. He or she doesn't want it. And then all of a sudden it changes the whole trajectory of things. But that could be down the road. Obviously, once we look into the study and see if it does qualify for that conversation.
Mayor, damn it.
Sure. So uh, I can tell you that there's a council meeting from about four years ago where I stated complaints were going to begin coming in about increased speeds on Lower Notch. And the reason that I stated that is because the residents came here in Groves screaming and yelling that they wanted to eliminate two side of the street parking on Lower Notch. Uh, and in response to that, we had, as the, or I should say, the council had agreed to pass an ordinance eliminating parking on one side of the street on Lower Notch with the uh, preface that it was very likely that speeding would increase because each direction of travel on Lower Notch now has its own free and open lane where people can pass at whatever speed it is. Where in the past, and I know you'll recall from all the years on Lower Notch and, and uh, and, and overlook that oftentimes heading down Lower Notch, you used to have to kind of pull into the side a little bit as a vehicle passed you. And you made it a bunch and somebody else pulled over, but speeds were much slower because people had to uh, avoid and watch out because there was two side of the street parking and it was not nearly as wide. So this is sort of one of those repercussions that I think we uh, foresaw but are now really seeing. Primarily because Route forty-six, the reconfiguration of it has totally changed, you're right, the usage of Lower Notch versus Notch Road exit because it's not just right there as it used to be. So anybody heading to, you know, a lot of the eastern sections of town will now use Lower Notch versus Notch Road because it's just not as convenient. With that, I, I know it sounds simple to put signs up on streets that say twenty-five miles per hour. Uh, but you'll notice most streets in most municipalities do not have signs a- at all. And that's because, and this goes back to uh, when you're fifteen, sixteen years old, taking your, your driving tests. But the state law says that if there is no speed limit posted, the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. Now, that doesn't mean they can't add signs. But as easy as that sounds in most people's heads, I can tell you, I ultimately end up receiving calls from every person that gets a new ugly pole in the middle of their front lawn that wasn't there five minutes ago. And they didn't know it was going to end up landing in the middle of their front yard. So you're right, it sounds like a very simple solution. Let's just add some signs, let's say twenty-five miles per hour. Unfortunately, when a new ugly pole lands in your front yard, uh, oftentimes people are not as, as happy about it as the people who want to see the twenty-five mile per hour signs put up. To the councilman's point, this is sort of another one of those similar to speed humps. Everybody wants them there. Just don't want them in front of your house, much like the speed humps. And the most recent street that we completed, Houston, where we added four speed humps, I can tell you two people in front of two separate speed humps have basically said, I'll pay anything to have it removed. Now, we had multiple meetings, we, you know, with that street alone, we've had multiple uh, you know, conferences and meetings with everybody on the roadway. Those were decided after much back and forth with engineers and entire, I should say, street meetings. Um, but what people don't realize is for the people that right now say, you know what, I'd be happy to have one in front of my house. What they don't realize is that every car does dramatically slow down right in front of your house. Otherwise, you're going to lose a bumper. But as soon as they get over that speed hump, those cars that are looking to make good time up and down a street hit the gas really hard. Now you're dealing with these cars and the noise and volume that comes with these cars speeding between speed humps. Now, they're not able to hit the same high speeds that they might have had they not been there. But the noise associated with it is another factor that comes up that people oftentimes just don't consider when a speed hump is being installed. Not saying it's not a possibility, just saying it's one of those things that are sort of not talked about until it's a problem in front of your house. We've also found, as easy as speed humps seem to be to have them installed, just a little bit of asphalt. We have found that between engineering costs, various meetings and the actual installation of speed humps, they end up costing about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per speed hump. There is a pretty tremendous cost associated with installing speed humps. And it seems like it shouldn't be, and I would absolutely agree with that as well. By the time you crunch all the numbers and all the time that's put into the location of speed humps, the plans that have to officially be drawn by an engineer and provided to a contractor and going out to bid, it ends up adding up pretty quickly. Uh, and Lower Notch is not a very short road where I'm sure four, five or six speed humps would likely be warranted based upon the distance and the D O T standards for, for adding speed humps. So it could be a hundred thousand dollar investment by the municipality to, based on our best, past batting average, uh, only be batting five hundred on people actually wanting them uh, in, in the locations that they ultimately go. Uh, so just, and again, another consideration that would have to be taken uh, into uh, effect. But as far as uh, the complaint portal that you heard the councilman reference, I, I actually just recently sent you the link a little while before you showed up tonight. Um, what we'd ask is for you to fill that out. And the reason we want you to fill it out is because it goes to the police department. Then the police department has your email and phone number and contact so that they can talk to you about where do you think the biggest issue on Lower Notch is? Where should we perform our speed study? Reason being, we've gotten complaints on other streets in town where people say there's a speeding issue here. So our police department, and this was before we had our complaint portal as we do now, the police department would go to that street. They'd set up a, a speed study. It's a little discreet box that you will not even know is there over the course of a week. And it'll capture data twenty-four seven for the course of that entire week. The problem is, we then meet with an individual after we find out, uh, uh, you know, or after we think we have an answer for them. And they will come to say, oh, no, no, they're not speeding in this section of the roadway. They're speeding in this section of the roadway. So it was, it was again, a waste of a week of capturing data. And we then have to redo it. So figuring out the best location to do that is also very helpful because we can do it one time, we can have the information sooner, we can try to find solutions sooner, uh, and try to address it. And there are several steps that we typically go through in doing that. Oftentimes, if we know that speeding is occurring between the hours of four to five P M, that would ultimately be a good time to have a police car sit there and do radar versus if it's not happening at one to two P M any day. And as we know, most people are creatures of habit. They drive very similar times, very similar routes most days. But if there's never a problem between one and two P M, it wouldn't make sense to have a police officer sit there during that period of time where we know the probability of them catching someone going in egregious speed is unlikely. So having that data in advance helps us uh, target enforcement and do all of that. So if you fill out that form, we'll be able to touch base with you and, and get that done. Um, that's the majority of what I wanted to say in response, but certainly looking into this is something we can do. We can figure out, you know, if and where the problem is and where it may be the worst. And then they can try some targeted enforcement first and take other steps from there before we get into the more costly things like speed humps. Uh, signs are certainly possible. And to the councilman's point, if there's already a sign somewhere, that's usually a really good spot to add another sign to that pole that's already existing because nobody's then surprised at having a new decoration or ornament on their front lawn. Uh, so certainly something that we can look into. I don't know how many signs we have readily available at our D P W yard or if more would need to be ordered, but certainly something we can, we can look into addressing.
Closing, if it's okay, I would like to thank mayor, police department, fire department. We had a horrible fire last December due to a tenant, uh, lack of responsibility. And I almost lost my husband and we lost part of our home. It's almost done. So I'm very pleased. The response was tremendous. I appreciate the support that we have towns.
Thank you. Seeing no one's coming before us, have a motion, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Peter Yerkowski. I live at thirty Crestmont Road. Actually, when I heard that where you lived, I thought, oh, here's somebody that's going to back me up on this. And, and perhaps, um, she still can. Um, Mr. Vincieri and, and the mayor, I guess you can guess why I'm here. Uh, my property backs basically on Route forty-six. And when they put the sound wall in, I'm, you know, I'm all in favor of it until now because it has virtually done nothing. My concern, as I spoke with mayor and Mr. Vincieri, uh, is the noise coming from the new bridge. Uh, I've, I've been out there at different hours trying to figure out what the problem is. Uh, if you drive over the bridge in a car, you really can't uh, feel much of a, of a dip. Uh, you know, because cars are just made differently than, than trucks. When trucks, especially um, these roll-off container trucks that may be empty, when they hit the dip, basically what the problem is, is that the asphalt is a little bit higher than the bridge decking. So when these trucks hit the dip, an outrageously loud noise emanates uh, throughout the neighborhood. I mean, I can hear the noise from my daughter's house on Villa Road. Uh, and I'm sure you've heard it and it, and it happens thirty, forty times a day. Mostly when truck traffic is the hat, uh, heaviest, maybe nine to three weekdays. Um, like I said, I talked to the mayor about this and I've talked to people in the D O T. And the mayor can attest to this too. Um, you know, nice people, um, in the complaint department, you know, listened to me, uh, tried to forward me to the project coordinator from State County, uh, Chris Yaronelli, I think his name is. Um, left messages for him four, five, six times, never got a call back. Uh, mayor's contacted Senator Carrato, trying to get some um, action on this uh, issue. And I've never heard anything back and I'm guessing that the mayor has never heard anything. And, and I'm not here to put anybody on the spot. Uh, I'm here to ask for your help. Uh, the last person I spoke with in the D O T indicated to me that they weren't going to do anything based on my complaint, that any complaint that might get addressed would have to come from the township uh, formally. Um, now, mayor, I'm not sure whether the town council would have to do that or I, I don't know what the mechanism would be to try to bring a more formal complaint to the D O T. But thi- this is not going away. It's a quality of, of life issue that's going to be there for decades, I would guess. And I'm sure this one can back me up. Um, it, it's just, the, the noise is horrendous. I can't use my backyard anymore. Uh, and I'm amazed that more people haven't complained about this.
Thank you for coming before us and whether one or ten come before us, we take every, every issue seriously. Um, so Councilman Vincieri, you have any insight on this?
And you know, I was in your backyard, the mayor, I heard it and I was by your daughter's house and we talked about it as well. You know who we can try is Commissioner John Bartlet from State County because he's on the National Transportation Safety Board. And he was involved in a lot of the work that was done on that Route forty-six, uh, Route three construction. So I'll circle back with you and we can reach out to Commissioner Bartlet and maybe have him come out and see what he can do to look into this because if you're getting a run around.
I'll give him lunch in the backyard.
Yeah, no, if you're getting a run around and you're being told, talk to this person, talk to that person, it'll be six months.
Yeah, it goes back to last October. I've, I've been speaking to them off and on for a year.
Yeah, because we've gone to Commissioner Bartlet in the past because ironically with all the construction last couple of years, we've got some complaints about um, the exits, you know, having the signage properly placed, especially if you slow down like fifteen, twenty miles per hour. And he was instrumental in helping that. He's helped with some of the state, uh, where Four Corners is, the traffic bike, getting it increased because we rented into uh, roadblocks on our end as well, asking the state to help out. So he's someone that we can definitely connect with um, that I know he'll take this on and want to help you any way he can. So.
I would appreciate it.
Do the councilmembers have any comments? Mayor, you have any insight on this?
Yeah, I can attest that Mr. Yerkowski has uh, raised this issue actually initially as of October seventeenth of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and we have a number of communications going back and forth until the D O T, I think, eventually told you that a request had to come from the municipality, through the Senator's office to them. And that happened on December eighth of two thousand twenty-three. That I made the request that day, the Senator's office and aide sent it over to D O T that same day uh, indicating that they were contacted by my office that there's an issue, uh, see the complaint below, and we were unable to, to rectify it as of that date. Unfortunately, the D O T has essentially been silent also in response to my inquiries, the Senator's inquiries. Uh, and, and, and we are at a point now where I don't know, maybe Commissioner Bartlet will be able to find us some solution because so far even through the Senator's office, who has the closest relationship with D O T at the state level, she has not had success. Um, there were a couple of other follow-ups indicating, you know, we still haven't heard back. We're sorry to hear the difficulties, but unfortunately it has fallen on, on deaf ears there. Uh, so certainly unfortunate. I know it's something that we've tried to do. We've taken every bit of action that we could on our end. Um, but at this point, maybe going to someone else might be the, the avenue.
I would appreciate anything you folks could do.
Thank you for coming before us. Is there anyone else that I come, like, would like to come before this governing body? Is there a peer or anyone in the chat that'd like to come before us? Have a motion to close the public comment. Moved by Councilwoman Havitz.
Second.
Second by Councilman Vincieri. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. I'd like to thank the staff for assisting me to put on this meeting. Have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman uh, Vincieri. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This meeting is now closed.